Seven P M and like to call the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting to order. Happy New Year, everyone. Because of COVID nineteen restrictions, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Public comments for this meeting were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you'd like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit our website at W W W dot Maryam dot org and follow the instructions there. As a reminder to the city council, please be conscientious of others trying to speak, speak slowly and clearly, and state your name prior to speaking. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I'll ask for clarification. The format for the council consideration on items tonight will be staff presentation. And then I will open up a time for council questions on. Please hold your questions until the end of the staff presentation. And if you have any questions, I want to ask them, and please physically raise your hands so that I can see them in the video. Tonight, we're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will show the flag on the screen, and I would ask everyone to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And then, at the end of the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that we have a moment of silence for peace and safety of our country. So we can do that, and then we'll do the role. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you very much. Julie, would you please call roll?
Chris Sizemore.
Here.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Calladon.
Here.
Councilmember Knaff.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good. Very good. Let's go into the public comments, and Julie, I would you please ask you to please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into the record.
There were no public comments submitted tonight, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. Then we'll move right into our consent agenda. And we have two items on the consent agenda this evening, and both of these items are listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests, in which case that items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. The items on the consent agenda this evening are Consider Approval of Minutes, the city council meeting held December fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and the second item is Consider Approval Facility Membership or Partnership Agreement with Pierfit. Is there any one that wishes to remove either of these items for separate? Mr. Silvers?
Yes, if we could remove and discuss a little bit the facility partnership agreement, I just need a little clarification, and I'm sorry, I didn't have time to email anyone ahead of time.
No problem. All now, since since that's the case, we'll all accept the motion and and a second for item number one, which is Consider Approval of Minutes. Bob Pape.
Mayor, I'd move the council approved Consider Agenda Item Number One.
Motion made. Mr. Neil, make a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calladon.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Very good. I will defer to staff with regard to information on Pierfit when we get that first, and we'll see if that covers Mr. Silver's questions.
I think my question can be answered really easily. I was, when I was reading through the literature, it looked like whomever uses this program to go to a facility, a gym, or other fitness facility will pay up to nine dollars, and then they get reimbursed. Is that reimbursement from an insurance company? I'm just trying to make sure it's it's not coming out of citizens' pockets.
Sorry, I was trying to find my microphone. That is actually a, not an insurance company, but it is a benefit offered through the employers. So it is paid by that benefit company. So think of it like your insurance premium. They get so many credits, and that insurance premium then pays us. So it's not coming out of any it's no different than what we do with Silver Sneakers or the other membership agreements that we've handled. It's just more for a corporate benefit versus an insurance benefit proceeding.
Great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this from any of the other council? No, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Bob Pape.
Mayor, I'd move that the council approved Consider Agenda Item Number Two.
And second, Chris Hands.
And I'll second it.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calladon.
Aye.
Member Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Very good. That takes care of the two items on the consent agenda. We'll move into the mayor's report. That time again where we honor some of our employees that are hitting one of their dates of employment, anniversaries. So I'll hand this over to staff to talk about who these folks are.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It is time for our quarterly employee service awards, as the mayor mentioned. So these are our employees that have hit a benchmark year within their tenure with the city. We only have two this particular quarter, which is the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty. And those two employees are both ten-year tenured employees, so they both had have completed ten years of service to with the city. First is Sheila Sheridan in our court. So let's congratulate her for her ten years of hard work and making the, making Team Maryam what it is. And then the second is Laura Larson in our police department. She is ten years was completed in the fourth quarter for ten years in the police department. So let's acknowledge her and give her a big thanks on behalf of the residents of Maryam. So again, we have plaques for these folks that we will hand out to them, and we will make sure that they are congratulated amongst their peers at the department level and within their departments. And we'll make sure that they're, your appreciation and your thanks and on behalf of the residents is passed on to them.
Good. Thank you. You know, this is obviously one of the many downsides of Zoom, because I'd love to be able to have them in our chamber, and we could congratulate them personally, but certainly we all are certainly are happy that they've been here ten years and hope to have many, many years of success in the future with us. Thank you very much. Let's move to the council items. The very first council item this evening is to consider approval of an agreement with Overland Park, mending a traffic signal agreement and approval of a memorandum of understanding. Chief McClellan.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Before you have an agreement, it's an addendum to agreement that the city already has in place with the city of Overland Park and the shared infrastructure involving traffic signals. The addendum is so that we could use their infrastructure that's in place to help with getting some LPR signals back to the department using the already in place infrastructure over the park instead of us having to place infrastructure in. This is not a new LPR project. This is part of the project the council approved in November of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Part of that project was one of the LPR cameras is at Seventy-Fifth and Kings Cove Drive. And Overland Park has infrastructure that they are agreeing to let us use so that we don't have to lay down new infrastructure in order to get that signal back to the police department. The other Mayor, I'm sorry, did you put, did you mention both the agreements or just the LPR agreement?
Um, let's see, I've got demanding traffic signal agreement, so that's all I have on my.
It could be both.
Okay.
Okay. And attached with that is just a, it's an M O U. It's a random understanding that involves the traffic signal, the traffic intersection cameras, does not involve our LPR system. It's just the intersection cameras that we have in place. Overland Park would like to share their intersection cameras with the city of Maryam, and in conjunction, we would share our intersection cameras with the city of Overland Park. This is for live feed and recorded feed. However, they do not have the ability to record data, capture data. They have to go through us, and us, if we want their data, same, same for theirs. So we still each control each other's data. It just gives us the ability without having to go through several different channels to be able to view live intersection cameras that Overland Park owns, i.e. Seventy-Fifth Street. Give us access to those that we didn't have to call Overland Park and ask to see what was going on at those cameras if we had any, and vice versa. They have the same interest about seeing cameras in our cities. Just as an example, intersection cameras and LPRs came in a lot of help catching a suspect who ran through our city, went through Overland Park, and they were able to chase or track him through the camera system in real time. So if you have any questions, you get the two issues. I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Mr. Neil.
Chief, does the, does the agreement only cover the sharing of the video of for on Seventy-Fifth Street, or, I mean?
No, we'll have access to all their cameras, all Overland Park cameras, and they'll have access to all of our intersection cameras.
So throughout the whole city of Overland Park?
Any other questions? To a motion, and I wanted to ask you know, obviously, and I think, you know, we're not at all shocked when we see the number of crimes that occur maybe in Maryam, and it seems to be, it's pretty steady, but I think everybody maybe has noticed the thefts have gone up, and they've gone up all around us, Shawnee, Overland Park, Overlake, almost everywhere I've had a real steep incline and car burglaries and in catalytic converter thefts, and also the thing that's probably most alarming to me is the number of vehicle pursuits that have resulted in us actually catching some of these guys. And of course, that puts our public at risk whenever we're driving too fast at times. So any ideas on what's causing all this stuff?
If I could write a book, it'd probably make a whole bunch of money. What I can tell you is this, is 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 we are, and whether it's COVID related or not, that would be a study that somebody could invest in, I would guess, but we're seeing a lot more people under the influence of alcohol. The number of DUI arrests we made in two thousand twenty was just compared to the previous years is just astronomical. We had, we were working a DUI accident when I had thirty-five last night, and one of the pro cars got rear-ended in the car. So it is, we're seeing a lot more instances of people drinking. They seem to be, for whatever reason, more violent. We're having more use, you've noticed their use of forces have gone up. If you're reading the briefing sheets I'm sending you, people are fighting. They had to use force, well, three over the weekend, two of them involved outside agencies that we had to go help. So I'm not exactly sure what the cause is, you know, cause and effect. You just look at it in a totally, it could be, you know, related to people being and the increased use of alcohol and other illegal substances. I don't know, but you know, I would, I would be, I wouldn't be shocked if someone said, yes, those are definitely correlated events, and we've been able to track it and the reason why. But it is, it is getting, or has been, a lot more dangerous out there for the officers and the public just because of the DUIs and people's and and all that. So it's been an odd year, where twenty twenty was an odd year. I hope twenty-one gets better.
Well, I appreciate your comments. In no reason, I'm gonna maybe showcase this, and I didn't give you any advance warning I was gonna do this, as I've I've been reading on Nextdoor and other places of people being very disheartened with the police in the neighboring city because of the serious increase in crimes in neighborhoods that are not used to having crimes hardly at all. And they, everybody tends to believe, well, it's the police not doing their job, and I think it's important for us, for the council to recognize that the police are doing their job. They're doing their job like they always have, and maybe even more so, maybe being more vigilant because of the increase in crime. But when you have this level of increase, it's almost impossible to be able to to make an influence in it unless you actually catch people. And as we know, most criminals are caught by accident, not by design. So if it, if you get, you know, anyone on the council gets, you know, calls or notes or emails from constituents about crime in their area, I just wanted you all to know that we're not, we're not unique. We are in the middle of a huge problem that may be even nationwide. I don't know, but certainly spread all across Johnson County and every city, so. And with that, with regard to the memorandum with Overland Park, I'll accept the motion in a second unless there are further questions.
David.
Yeah, um, again, and I probably should, maybe should know this, but do we have is there the video sharing across the county with other jurisdictions or that you know of, like, I mean, for example, obviously, do we get feed from other other jurisdictions that are not, you know, contiguous to us, or, I mean, is that, is that something that's starting to happen as a trend, or is what, is it just very specific to, you know, an individual situation?
It's right now, this is the first one that we've initiated. We do plan on expanding this out to tacitly discuss this with them, but we're nowhere near, they're no, they're not ready to do, to engage in that yet. I know Overland Park has other agreements with other neighboring cities. I believe there's one with Leewood, just off the top of my head. This is not something that's new, and it's not something that's, you know, just going to stop with Overland Park. We're all using very, the same system. So enterprise, enterprising this system is not, it's not a problem. And again, especially with the dispatch centers and the individual agencies. As you know, Maryam's four and a half square miles, so, you know, stuff goes outside of the city or comes through the city because of I thirty-five from the other jurisdiction. So having the ability to look at other cameras nearby to be able to track, kind of track this stuff is just beneficial.
I guess my question has to do with how we, we handle pursuits now that are cross-jurisdictional. Should you just get a description of the vehicle that's coming, you know, if it's coming our way towards Maryam, or so the cameras in a sense give you a, maybe might give you a, you know, a look at in a more real-time way of what's going on? Is that, is that my, am I understanding what we're trying to do here?
Yeah, you know, absolutely. Eventually, we'd like for the county to be able to look at our camera system as well, because we dispatch through the county. But Overland Park Dispatch will be able to see our cameras. And if we need to start reviewing cameras, you know, because some coming from Overland Park in the north, then we can get set out for it in a better location. The officer will be able to do that. So yeah, it's just giving us a little bit of heads up. We don't tend to get involved in too many pursuits, but we do make sure that we're in the neighborhood and in the area to help the pursuit ends in Maryam so that we can lend assistance to the other chasing agencies. And quite frankly, you'd be surprised the number of times you just stop in Maryam for whatever reason they crash. It's just, it just helps us get.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I just wanted to kind of understand sort of what the thinking and where we were going, and I appreciate the answer. Thanks.
Any other questions? Gonna entertain a motion, please, in a second. Bob Pape.
Mayor, I'd move the council approve an addendum to the agreement between the city of Maryam and Overland Park for operation and maintenance of traffic signals.
And a second. Anybody? Chris Hands.
I'll be happy to second that.
Motion made in second, made and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Calladon.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
One thing to add, something that Chief McClellan was hesitant to state, I think. This vehicle is involved, our vehicle that was involved in the accident was parked, and thankfully, it was occupied. The officer was actually working another DUI case at the time. But the vehicle had only been out on the street how long, chief?
It's one of my new ones. It's from, and it's always the new ones that get hit. So it was from last year. We bought it in twenty.
Yeah, so.
We're still waiting. We're still waiting to see if it's totaled or not.
Yeah, you can, maybe you can imagine it, but it's, I can tell you from being a former chief, the cost to replace a vehicle with equipment depending upon the damages, many, many thousands of dollars. It's a sad thing. Well, anyway, the thing, the most important thing is no one was hurt. Thank you again. We're gonna move to our next item.
Mayor, we've, we've got a second motion on the M O U. Please, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Very good. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Overland Park for the video camera feed sharing. Bob Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd move the council approve a memorandum of understanding with Overland Park for video camera feature.
And Chris Hands.
And I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calladon.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here, chief. Next item is Consider Approval of the Contract with U.S. Bank for Banking Services. Don Oliver's gonna talk about that.
Good evening. In two thousand nine, the city moved to U.S. Bank, and they've been our bank ever since. We've had a very positive and good relationship with them, but really, it's good every so often to go out for banking services, even if you're happy, just to make sure that you're still getting competitive rates on your funds and that you're not paying too much in fees. And so we, we did that. We had seven banks and all respond. We are recommending that we just stay with U.S. Bank for a number of reasons. One, they are the only responding bank that is located actually in Maryam, and I think it's nice whenever you can do business with a bank that that is in your actual city area. They, and that also brings the convenience of just being a couple of blocks away from the closest branch. They, their bid was competitive with everyone else. They had, we had put in the R F P to suggest ways that we could improve our technology and improve the way that we're doing things. They had some interesting ideas that we're gonna explore in the future, and just in general, since we were already very satisfied with them, we're recommending we stay with them. I would love to answer any questions if there are.
Jason Silvers.
Reading the packet, I did learn that besides being conveniently located and a business that's here in Maryam, I learned that they were good stewards to our local citizens and cities. But one thing I do look for when I'm looking at banks is to see if they are a B corporation, a B Corp business or a global alliance for banking on values member. And I couldn't find any of that information online. And I think these days it's good to think globally and find companies that take care of things beyond just low rates and things like that. And so I was wondering if, if you knew if they had these rankings, and if not, if maybe this is something the city can start looking into in the future when looking for loans. And, and thanks.
And I missed, I apologize. I missed the very first part of your question, but I understood it to be that you're kind of wanting to know what kind of corporate partner they are, and are they?
I'm looking to see if there, I couldn't find if they were a member, if they were a participant of a B Corp business, or if they were listed as a B Corp business, or if they were a global alliance for baking, sorry, banking and values member.
And I am not familiar with either of those, and I have no idea if they are, but certainly I could find out.
What was the second thing? B Corp business or a global?
Global Alliance for Banking on Values. So basically, it's companies, banks that are responsible globally in things other than banking, like environmental, helping with environmental issues and things like that, like using their money wisely to help globally, and and it's something that's really important that I think people really need to start looking into when they're looking at banks. It's a lot of money that's flying around, and they have the ability to help out.
Well, we can certainly look at that going forward. I don't want to speak for Donna, but I mean, I, I mean, we won't go out for banking again. I mean, the last time we went out for banking services was oh nine, so it'd be, it'd be quite a while before we went out for them again, but we can definitely, in the you know, between now and whenever the next time is, make sure that that's something that we make sure we're plugged into.
Mr. Engle, I would ask that maybe you find that out from, or maybe Donna find that out and make sure that Mr. Silver finds an answer for his question.
I'll inquire tomorrow about it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yodrich.
I was gonna say, I have a couple lists of banking companies and finance companies that are ranked in that way, Jason, so I can share that via email to you and Donna and Chris.
That'd be great. That'd be great. I found some lists. I didn't see U.S. Bank Corp on it, so I didn't know if maybe there was a more extensive list.
I recently evaluated my 401 K against some of those as well, and so I still have it in my email, so I'll find it and send it to you guys the next day or two.
That would be great.
Okay. Any other questions concerning this issue? Seeing none, then I'll accept the motion. A second. Bob Pape.
Mayor, I'd move the council approve a contract with U.S. Bank for Banking Services.
A second. Chris Hands.
And I'll second that.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Calldon?
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight to you.
Very good, thank you very much. Next item is CIP update. Jim listed as a person to call on updates.
Not, not much has happened, Jim is here absolutely to give an update if, if, if we'd like one. I don't think much has happened, but Jim, why don't you, since you're on there, go ahead and tell them what you've been up to.
Okay, I've got, good evening, Mayor and Council. I've kind of got the update for your January. Not a lot's happening on the street, but a lot is in the background. We have our East Frontage Road, 67th to 75th Street Cars Project. Last week, we met with the Finnis to verify the quantities on that road. And Finnis Engineering is finishing the final plans for that project. We plan to go out to bid late January, early February for the Cars Project. We also are, have our 2021 Mill and Overlay Program. But Finnis is also working on that program with us, they're gonna put that in the same bid package. Some of the streets that we are currently scheduled to do is Goodman Street, North City Limits to Johnson Drive, 55th Terrace from Goodman to Lowell, 55th Street from Antioch to Hadley, 51st Place west to Knox, and then Perry Lane south of 51st Street. We also have Craig Road from Shawneish and Parkway to 61st Street. We did a pipe project there a couple of years back, and we're gonna mill and overlay that in 2021. Also included in that bid package for Finnis will be our 2021 sidewalk maintenance and repairs. Staff has identified several locations for sidewalk maintenance. Basically, it is gonna be from Maston east to Campbell, from Johnson Drive south to Shawneish and Parkway, that area over by the Marion Park School, not Maston, but the residential area over there. We have some substandard sidewalks that need repaired, and we're gonna try and take care of those in 2021. So that's what I have for your update. I'm free to answer any questions on any CIP or Public Works items.
Chris Hands?
I want to add to everyone else who just raves about what good work you and you got, your guys do on snow removal. And then I also noticed that our little easement drain that we worried about on Switzer has been repaired. Thank you for getting that done. Now my question, because I used to live on Goodman where the quote hot dogs live. I'm just curious, when we do the mill and overlay, what's gonna happen on that? And, and it's not just that I used to live there, people still ask me about it, so I'm curious.
Our, our current plans for that are to mill down the impellers that are there and leave the, the bump out, curb bump outs to assist with the traffic calming. So we're going to remove the impellers and put pavement markings that will still adjust the traffic around those curb bump outs. So still will have the traffic calming effect.
Yeah. Jason Silver's?
I just wanted to say how great of a job your snow removal team did. And I don't know, you have a system set up, but like with the police ride alongs, I would like to maybe go on a large item pickup ride along and maybe a snow removal ride along if that's possible.
It's, it's been a few years since we've had a council member do the snow removal. It's long and, and sometimes it's scary, but we'd love to have you along. We, we can call you at midnight and have you come out with one of those crews if you're interested.
I just wanna caution you about COVID as well, don't forget.
Oh, I'm talking about, I'm talking about down the road.
Oh, yes, in the, yeah, currently, we have one person in the truck, correct?
Anybody else? Okay, Bob Page?
Yeah, yeah, Jim's still here, okay. Yeah, I have a question, Jim, concerning the, the East Frontage Finnis Project. As far as, one of the things that, you know, we've talked about, and I know it's coming up in the 2040 Visioning document, but is, is bike lanes? And, you know, this is a pretty major project, and I'm just curious as far as any, is it strictly gonna be mill relay right back where we're at? Are we gonna be able to widen any, add any bike lane into that, that East Frontage Project or?
Well.
No looking at that now.
Yeah, well, as with any projects, we, we do speak to the engineers and ask them about bike lanes and other safety for sidewalks, and reach out then. And we don't have enough easement on that project, so the funds that we have budgeted for that wouldn't even encompass close what we'd have to get to make that a bike lane. They're also concerned about the, the speed on that road and just, just the whole width of it is, that is, the width of the road existing.
Weren't there some issues also that there's, I mean, there's some drop off over there? To where you can't, you can't, I mean, you've got, you're hammered between K dot and then on part, part of that, there's, I mean, you'll, you'll roll down the hill when you get next to the neighborhood down there at about 69th or 70th, didn't that?
Yeah, that's the Antioch Hills neighborhood, just south of 69th is where there's the creek right in there. So it would involve a lot of storm drainage repairs or upgrades to make that available. So we don't have the funds to make that road. But we are, every, every, every year, every road we're looking into, we do reach out to engineers and see what we can do for, for bike lanes, because we know that's a hot topic, and if we can put them on there, we definitely will.
I appreciate that, and the fact that, you know, you guys are looking at that, and we can at least tell people when they ask us about that, that that is something that we take into consideration on any of the streets that we're doing. I've also seen some other, in other cities itself, the emblem of the bicycle kind of designating as this is a bikeway, even though there's no specific bike lane. We don't have any of those in Merriam, is that something we could look at or should consider? Or as far as the designation, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I've just seen it in other cities.
Yeah, I, I know one of our neighboring cities got a grant to put that in a lot of the residential areas. And, you know, the, the jury's still out on if that gives the bicyclist a sense of safety, because they're still sharing the road with the motorists, they don't have a designated four foot bike lane. And as motorists, we, we should know that we are, we do have bicyclists there. So the jury's still kind of out if that's something good to do or not, and we don't have any in our city currently.
Okay, thanks, I, I was just curious.
Anything else for Public Works Director? All right, well, thank you, Jim, have a good night. I'll switch my attention to our city administrator, I'm asking if he has any staff items this evening.
I, I don't have any staff items, I was gonna turn it over to Meredith, she has a discussion topic. But before we get into that, and maybe it's, it's more of an update, I guess, than a discussion topic. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to acknowledge the, the Police Department and the Public Works, good work that they did over the holidays, working on the holidays in the snow removal, and you folks already handled that. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me before I turn it over to Meredith.
I think we're good.
All right, Meredith, take it home.
Great, good evening, everyone. I wanted to follow up on a conversation we had before the holidays about videotaping council meetings once we are back together in person. Jenna has been our lead on this project, and she put together some options for Chris and I to take a look at. And it looks like the best option for us is actually to do this in-house. So before we hit go on that project with our existing contractor, and it would be under Chris's spending authority amount, so it wouldn't necessarily come back to council, I wanted to just confirm one more time that we're all in agreement about what the scope of that project will look like. So from our last conversation, where we ended up is that you all were fine with a video that showed one camera angle from the back of the council chambers, showing everyone at the dais. And then we would switch to show the presentation when that, when a PowerPoint was going on, so the viewer would be able to see the PowerPoint. And, and then that video would be not streamed live, but it would be posted later in the week. Hopefully, I mean, as soon as possible. And, but we have to have it closed captioned in order to be in compliance with ADA. So once we had it closed captioned, we would post it on YouTube and then let the public know that it's available. And so very similar to the process that we have right now with Zoom meetings, except of course, we don't have these closed captions. So it, I just wanted to confirm and check in that everyone is still okay with that scope of work before we get started on that project.
Do you got any comments? Sounds like a direction. You know, this is one of those topics that we've been after for years. I know in some of my initial requests, it seems that the lack of knowledge on my part made me ask for something that was actually a lot more difficult or expensive than I thought it would be. That's kind of why we really haven't done too much. I mean, let's, let's face it, in this world with the technology we have, we can pretty much do it, you know, in any way we want. We wanna spend the money on it, but you know, it gets unrealistic after a while. Mr. Pape, do you have a question?
Oh, I, I was just gonna add, Mayor, that in our discussions that we had in the past for Meredith, that, you know, we kind of talked about this basic level initially, but we could expand on it a later date if, you know, next year or we decided we wanna upgrade or do something different, we can always add on to it at some further time in the future. I'm good with it.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah, obviously, you know, since I've been on the council, this is something that I've wanted to see us do. So I appreciate the fact that we're taking this step, and, you know, I wanted to thank you for your work on that. And again, can, concur with Bob as far as, let's see how it goes. And we'll see whether we need to adjust in, in some way in the future. And, and, and so I'm, I'm enthusiastically in support of moving forward with it.
Great. Will be to get started on this as soon as possible. So, and when we were, are able to meet again in person, it will be installed and ready to go. So we'll able, be able to seamlessly transition into meeting in person.
Very good.
Great, thank you.
All right. And there are no further new business, so I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. Bob Page?
I'd make a motion that we adjourn, Mayor.
And Chris Hands?
I second that, please.
Madam Clerk?
I'll answer.
Aye.
Bye.
I'll see you all next time, bye-bye.